All right, this is the special meeting of the Legislative Affairs Ethics Transparency and Communications Committee. Would you like to take a roll call?
Councilmember Iglesias?
Here.
Councilmember Penalosa?
Present.
Councilmember Solario?
Present.
The first item of business before you is the election of a Chair and a Vice Chair. Oh, I'm so sorry. Any members of the public here for a comment? Seeing no members of the public, the first item of business is to elect a Chair and a Vice Chair. So would anyone like to make any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Penalosa as Chair and Councilwoman Iglesias as Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
I am not interested in serving as either. Brown is truth, so I would like to decline.
You have a substitute.
Now joining, Kenny Bagby.
Dan Maldonado.
I would be happy to serve as Chair since Councilmember Penalosa politely declined.
So I believe-
We do have Brown, which is why, obviously, this was not thought out this way, but that then is the amended motion with recommendation-
Now exiting, Kenny Bagby.
Dan Maldonado.
Solario as Chair. Any other nominations or comments on that before a vote?
Is that the way it goes? We nominate each other?
You can nominate each other. You can nominate yourself. You can... You just have to nominate someone that's on the committee.
For how long is the term?
According to your bylaws and the resolution that created this, they establish this committee January of every year. The full City Council does.
And so in general, it comes back before us again?
Correct.
But we only have one more meeting before then, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I mean, if, for whatever reason, a person doesn't want to continue serving, is that a-
It would be certainly at your pleasure. If you wanted to decline, the City Council would just need to replace you. On the committee.
Beans are great.
So I believe you have a motion on the table for Chair Solario and Vice Chair Iglesias.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's unanimous. So now, I will turn it over to the Chair.
There have been Chairman Penalosa.
No, that's fine.
But obviously, we did coordinate it. I would be happy to serve in that capacity. We don't have many meetings, as was suggested, but there is a lot of legislative activity, both at the state and federal level, and where we need to, we can do special meetings as well. But we are in the middle of a recess, at least from the state standpoint, so it's a good time for this meeting. Okay, so the next item is item number two, receive and file the minutes from the prior meeting. And I think just as a courtesy, even though some of us may not have been there, it's entirely appropriate for all the members of this committee to approve those minutes if they'd like. Do we have a motion for... And it's also just receive and file. Thoughts, questions, colleagues?
This is the first that I'm seeing, so I apologize for that. So when's our next meeting?
Next one?
February.
It would be February... No, I'm sorry, that's the old one. It is February? It says February 2019.
Which one?
That was a mistake. February.
February 2020 would be your next meeting.
Oh, okay.
That seems like an attorney from now, but right now, what's before us is the minutes. So I'll make a motion on the minutes, just for sake of process. Have a second?
Just a point of clarification, Madam City Attorney. Since I know that previously, I would... We were encouraged not to vote on the minutes if we weren't here. Is that... Am I allowed to?
Yeah, I think in this circumstance, because we have new members of this committee, it's actually a new titled committee, that that general rule wouldn't apply in this condition, because we do need to have the minutes approved.
Okay.
If you would prefer to wait and listen to the audio tape-
It's more of a courtesy, unless you want to spend more time.
But there's nothing significant in there unless you want to go back.
I read them over, and I didn't find anything significant in it. I just wasn't sure if legally I was allowed to approve them, since I wasn't part of the meeting.
Yeah, staff is presenting them to you as a reflection of what they heard on the audio tape when they prepared them, so they were making the recommendation that you adopt them.
And just receive and file, that's it? We're not agreeing with whatever it's... Okay.
Yes, just receive and file. So I made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Penalosa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Next, we're going to item number three. City Manager Rich will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Chair. So since this is a newly put together group, we wanted to just do some background before you got into the meat of your agenda, on the... A little bit of the history of this committee. So initially, this committee was first formed by resolution in 2013, and at that time, it was just referred to as the Legislative Committee. The bylaws were created shortly after that, and I have just a fairly short PowerPoint presentation to take you through what are the bylaws of this committee. And one of the things that I have not been able to locate, I am trying to locate, is if there was ever a... It was genuine. Okay. So when it was initially created in 2013, it was just Legislative Committee. You're going to see, when you hear about the bylaws, that the bylaws are really focused only on legislative stuff. However, in January 19, as a result of this committee, they did amend the title of the committee to include all the other elements that you now see presented on your agenda. So an update to your bylaws is probably something that would be a good thing for this committee to work on, because as written now, your purpose is to consider legislative policy matters related to our city business that are referred to you by a committee member, the city manager, a city department, or your legislative representatives or advocates. The powers and duty that are vested in you in this committee is to receive input on legislative information, and then to make recommendations to the full council on legislative priorities. When it was first created, it was intended to have three sitting members of the City Council, a Chair and a Vice Chair, and the officers are elected by the majority of the City Council in January of each year, and of course, the Secretary appointed from staff. In the bylaws, it calls for quarterly meetings, and then specially meetings may be called by a Chair or at the request of a member. And a quorum, obviously, is a majority of the committee. To have an excused absence, there just has to be notice received within two hours of the meeting. An amendment that was made to those bylaws back in March 19, 2019, was that the quarterly meetings were changed to a biannual schedule, February and August. That's why the meeting that you're having today is a special meeting, because we're in July, not in August. And the scheduling of those meetings were allowed to correspond with the state and federal legislative calendars. So that's why you had those two dates selected. However, in between meetings, you do receive monthly reports, which also go to the entire City Council, on briefing you on current legislation and other items that are happening in that area. And then, just lastly, like all of the committees that you guys are so used to serving on in your City Council, you do follow Robert's Rules of Order. So I know I went kind of quickly, but that was just a brief background on the committee and the purpose. You can probably tell that from the bylaws, there isn't a lot of guidance on the other issues that are before you as well, including ethics, transparency, and communications. But the title has been changed.
So for clarity, then, you're recommending the bylaws that are... It's a two-sided sheet that still says Legislative Committee, and you're suggesting this document, but just a change in the name of the committee?
No, the name... The change in the committee name was done already, but your bylaws do not reflect any purpose, responsibility, relative to those other items that were changed in January.
So, you know, as the council may recall, in early January, after the election, when we elected new council members, the city clerk brought to the City Council a list of all the council committees. You actually discussed those a number of times, but then you continued them and continued them. Finally, the council got to a point where they adopted a new list of the committees, including this one, and renaming it. But what you have not done, because there was never a meeting, is you never updated the bylaws to reflect the action that you took in the winter of 2019. So that is a to-do item, so that you now-
So at some point, we do need an action on that. It's on today's agenda as review and discussion, so maybe, I guess, we could just give direction or comments here, if there are any. I mean, it does make sense that a minimum, we need to reconsider the bylaws with the change in name, but there should be some mention of some of the other subject matters. And I vaguely remember do seeing a document that referenced communications and other responsibilities, but maybe I'm recalling incorrectly, but-
Now joining, Kenny Bagby.
Dan Maldonado.
Because if not, I guess, what are your... What's staff suggesting that these bylaws haven't been updated in how many years?
The committee was created in 2013. I would assume the bylaws were created shortly after that, but they're reflective of a Legislative Committee only.
Right, right. I have a vague recollection that we had considered in the past a more detailed bylaw sheet, but it could have been a related document in a staff report or otherwise, so I'm not 100% sure, but that does seem odd. Councilmember Iglesias?
So, yeah, my question would be, I know when they came before us, for the entire City Council, to approve the, I guess, the committees, and also, since the name was changed, I always thought it was something that was already implemented. So what was the thought behind staff? I mean, who made the changes? And what was the thought behind making the change to the committee?
Since our city manager wasn't here at that time, a couple of things, just to comment. The City Council makes those choices. The city clerk's office presented the City Council with the list of the then-existing City Council committees. It was the City Council who was asked to give feedback on restructuring or renaming. And we, as I recall, you postponed that discussion on two occasions. I'm looking at the minutes now. So when the City Council finally decided, okay, these are the committees we want, you chose the names.
But the name of this committee has been Ethics Transportation, Transparency, and Communications for-
Only since February of 2019.
I don't believe so. I remember being on this committee-
So that's where my question is.
And I remember that communication was the regular-
I'm looking at the minutes now, we're trying to go back. One of the problems that we have is that our city clerk who put this together, we've had a number of transitions, both in the manager and the clerk's issues, but we did not update the bylaws to reflect this committee. At least, that's what our documentation's-
I think really what I'm saying here is we need a little bit more staff background on the history and related documents. And again, it could be that they're related documents that weren't the bylaws, but with respect to the name, I know we've had this committee name for quite some time, and probably the minutes of the last meeting, which were from last year, also indicate Legislative Affairs, Ethics, Transparency, and Communications. So this committee has had that name and obligations for considerably longer than just earlier this year. So maybe we move on to the next item and bring this back in the future.
One comment. I agree with you completely. The name change has officially been made. My point was that your bylaws for the committee do not have any information regarding those additional duties, and the bylaws are created and adopted by this body.
And it could be, but just the information to date, as we're discussing this item, there's conflicting information from the staff about awareness of the committee name and when it came to existence and all the rest. So I just... I'm not 100% convinced that this is the latest versions of the bylaws. They may very well be, but, I mean, there was confusion even on when we... How long we've had this committee, this name, and I don't want to focus on something that may not be entirely accurate. As well as this review and... For review and discussion, anyway, there's not an action in mind, but definitely, I would ask that staff continue to do that research, and maybe, definitely in advance of our next committee, if you could do that additional research to find when the committee name was changed, and at what point did the additional information might have been... Could be that with the last council, when they did change the committee to this name, there might have been a staff report or other documents that laid out other items that were going to be part of this committee and the reasons, and perhaps bylaws. So as you find that information, if you could share that to the council.
We do know the date was January 15, 2019, is when the name changed.
Are you positive? I would suggest not.
I will double-check.
It doesn't appear so.
We will double-check.
I just want to make sure. I think that is it, but we do... I want to make sure before.
That might have been where it might have been read, but again, even the prior minutes was under the prior name. And I think I was on the committee the last time, so it's... This has not been the Legislative Committee all this time. It has been broader than I believe.
The other minutes-
Yes, any comment?
Yeah, I have comments. So the other minutes say from... They met twice, right? Every year? So do you have the minutes from the prior to see what they reflect?
Previous to the change, they were meeting quarterly. And I have in front of me minutes from October 2018, and they do have the heading of Affairs, Ethics, Transparency, and Communications.
Yeah, so somewhere it happened... That's why when it came before us, it's just-
Correct.
It just voted, because I didn't know.
I thought we added the legislative title a couple months ago. I remember that being coming before us on the City Council. Right?
That's what we're trying to determine, so we don't know if the heading on the minutes were just staff utilizing what the current title is. We thought at one point we had found a action that was taken in January 2019, but our city attorney wants to confirm.
I just want to make sure. Yeah. I can't tell you that when the committee was originally formed, it was formed as Legislative, and at least, when I started staffing the committee, it was Legislative and Ethics only. That was the title. It just did Legislative, and it used this committee under the charter mandate that you meet at least once a year to review your ethics code. What happened since, we will find out. We'll give you definitive answer, and we'll show you documents to back that up.
Yeah, it could be that the last kind of change was to add communications in there, and it might have been from the dais that we made that, not the committee, because I don't really remember being on this committee, but I do remember a lot of dialogue about-
That change was made from the City Council. I know it was made in January of 19 to add at least one thing, and I'm going to find out.
Right. Yeah, there's been various changes over the past two, three years, and we'll clarify that. If okay with the committee members, we'll move on to item two, but again, in the meantime, if staff can give us additional background, that'd be fantastic. Item number four is review and discussion of the 2018 Legislative Scorecard.
In front of you, you have the 2018 Scorecard. This was approved at the April 2, 2019 City Council meeting. It's a review of the platform from 2018, and also, the progress made by each department.
Very good. So again, councilmembers, we did see this before us at a City Council meeting, but if there are any additional questions or comments? I have none. Councilmember Iglesias?
Yes.
No? Councilmember Penalosa?
I have none.
Okay. As well as there's related information with the 2019 Legislative Platform, so let...
Bagby.
Dan Maldonado.
Welcome back. You know, you may have fallen off, but we did hear the two individuals on the call, so thank you for being with us. We're now on item number five, which is review and discussion of the Legislative Platform for 2019. Ms. Houston?
Again, this was also approved at the April 2, 2019 City Council meeting. It's the 2019 platform, Legislative Platform for the city. It's produced every year. Typically, it goes to this committee in February, and then is scheduled to go to a City Council meeting immediately following, most likely, the first meeting in March, which is our plan for next year. This one came out a little bit late due to the lack of a Legislative Committee to approve prior to going to City Council.
Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? Again, this is another item that was presented before, as they're looking at documents. I would... I just have just one general comment slash question that relates to this and other items. Because this committee doesn't meet as frequently, we end up having the approval of the city manager or councilmembers. We have been sending letters of support or opposition to the state legislature in particular. I don't know that that's the best practice for it, to just be so random. Maybe for the next meeting, we just need a little bit of a process on it. It might be that, you know, a request for it to be vetted by the city manager's office or by our legislative advocates, and then maybe something gets forwarded to the council for consideration, or, you know, at the minimum, a copy of the bill, and the latest legislative analysis, or author fact sheet. Again, just because this committee doesn't meet often, and there's been an absence of process, we really don't have a consistent way of taking positions on bills, though we have. And then similarly, with our staff and advocates, we need to figure out for those things that might be priority legislative items, consistent with our Legislative Platform, that early on in the season, that our advocates and staff say, hey, Legislative Committee or Council, these are five priority bills and priority areas that you ought to take a proactive position on, so it can be reflected and involved in those things from the beginning, rather than, you know, at some random point in the process. So just in fact, Councilmember Penalosa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we have sent letters of support or opposition over the last... Since I've been here over the last seven, eight months, which I all generally agreed with, and I know that there's guiding principles that we go by in here, and just from the top of my head, the ones that we've supported this year, or bills that we've opposed, is to preserve the local control and protect our charter, us as a city charter. So I think... I do agree with Councilmember Solario that we should... I don't think it's been done random, but I do think that we should just bring the legislative priorities and guiding principles, kind of more have like an informative discussion amongst the City Council, just so that we know what the overall guiding principles and goals of our city is, are.
Those are good comments. And again, related to that, you know, if there are three bills that are, you know, make or break for this jurisdiction, or prior jurisdictions, there's been a lot of focus on housing, and in particular, that affects us, and homelessness. And so, for example, if there are priority bills and those subject matters, and I think we did do some letters, and at least for one of those bills, it would be good for us to be on the record in support of those priority bills that are... That go with priority Legislative Platform items. Councilmember Iglesias?
One question that I have on these... You have, I guess, your categories of legislation that... Or initiatives that come before, you know, legislators up in Sacramento. One thing I don't see here is for housing. I know right now with the both SCAG and OCOG, we're talking about the RENA numbers, and is that something too that we're tracking, or that we're putting our, I guess, our influence into taking our stance up to Sacramento with our legislative and also with our consultants?
Council Vice Chair Iglesias? It certainly would fit in with your priorities of retaining local control. So one of the fabulous things about the city of Santa Ana is that you are one of 16 agencies out of over 500 municipalities in the state of California that is currently meeting their RENA numbers, thanks to the hard work of some people that are sitting here in the audience, our Community Development Department. There has been substantial state legislation that is moving towards heavier punitive penalties for those jurisdictions that are not meeting those numbers. We're not at risk of that currently, but that would certainly play into, you know, maintaining local control.
Okay. So is that something that... I know we get frequent updates from the League of Cities, but do we get anything from like SCAG and OCOG or all councilmembers to see?
I can't speak to what information you would get. I can tell you that your executive managers of all of your department, through their professional associations, oftentimes receive a briefing on areas that are specific to whether it's public works and stormwater, or whether it's parks and rec and additional federal grant money. They do receive that information. Is there something that you're looking to receive that you, outside of from our two, our federal and our state consultants?
Well, this is not even more about money. It's more about, you know, like the whole local control philosophy. And I know right now that they're coming, you know, the new governor, Newsom, and also the new legislature, they're coming strong to make sure that we, I guess, construct so many housing units that as cities that we're not, I would say, able to, because, you know, cities aren't in the business of construction. So what I was wondering is if that's something that we could also, you know, have more emphasis on, because it's something that's going to be affecting us definitely in the near future. And it's some... I know that we have the League of Cities here, but I'm wondering if we also could have, like, you know, some type of update on the RENA numbers, because that's very important.
Yeah, I think what Vice Chair Iglesias is talking about is a good point, that there's a lot of discussion on how to update RENA numbers, the governor's trying to get agencies like SCAG to be more aggressive, and new versions of what RENA looks like, and related policies on what character sticks the legislature may use to have cities encourage that kind of development. So I don't know if it might be something that goes to the Edgbet Committee, or something that handles housing. It's... But housing, for not just the reasons that the Vice Chair spoke about, but also because of issues of homelessness and our neighbors, et cetera, I think it's a very important conversation for us to have in more detail, because again, these conversations are occurring, and we're part of them, but maybe we could find the appropriate committee to start with. My only concern with sometimes taking these items to the City Council, and this would be a good City Council meeting, or maybe a special meeting, is sometimes if we lump it in with the 200 items that we're trying to talk about, we end up having, unfortunately, too limited a conversation about anything that gets addressed at that level. So maybe the staff can think about what might be the appropriate forum for us to have a conversation about that. And maybe it's a special meeting to look at that, and also, you know, city manager, you're working on an updated homeless services enforcement plan for us to consider, and, you know, they kind of go hand in hand a little bit. So maybe as part of one meeting that is just about housing and homelessness, that actually would be a very good thing. But again, maybe there are other forums for this dialogue as well. Any additional thoughts from you, Councilmember Penalosa, on this item? This is discussion of the Legislative Platform.
None at the moment.
If I can make one comment in response to Vice Chair Iglesias. One of you, you're a member of the League, which you do get a lot of information from. Many of the other cities in Orange Counties are a member of the Association of California Cities of Orange County, and they are pretty active as well in the legislative area. And one thing that they do provide is they put together a number of different task force on specific issues, such as homelessness, such as pensions, such as, you know, RENA laws. That is something that, in the past, I believe you were a member of?
You know, I do think that's a fantastic suggestion. The League has forums as well, but there are so many local issues that the more forums... Or sometimes, we can't attend League events, but maybe we can attend other events. I've been to ACCO meetings, wearing my Water District hat, and they're very useful. They had a recent one on pensions, and it was timely, it was good, and again, there are some topics that we really aren't discussing enough of. So I do think that city manager, under your recommendation, I think it is in the budget, and, you know, hopefully, we can begin to become active with that group. And I think they... There may be some more assigned people, but I think everybody on the council can attend those events, and they, I'm sure, will be having various forums on this as well. So thanks for bringing that up, city manager. Anything else from the colleagues? Seeing none, we will now move forward with item number six. We have some legislative updates from our federal advocates at Holland and Knight. I believe we have Dan Maldonado on the phone, and possibly Leslie, but I think I did hear Dan's voice on the system here. Can you hear us, Dan?
Yep.
All right. All right.
Yes, I'm on the phone.
This is your time, Dan, go for it.
Yes, okay. Well, you, you have a lot of territory that you're covering. Let me try to, to sort of cut to the chase around the update. One thing I wanted to comment on the housing and homelessness, homelessness issues, there is a, a, a stronger awareness than ever before. I won't quite say it's at a critical mass yet politically, but a lot more bipartisan interest in trying to address homelessness and some of the issues about how do you prevent, you know, that one paycheck away before you, you end up, you know, without a home or the need for wraparound services and to try to deal with both the emergency and the prevention side of, of that as well. Again, trying to work it in a way that it's, you know, that, that involves the, the state. Are we still on?
Yes, we can hear you, keep going.
Hello?
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was afraid that I may have cut you off. So there is considerable activity in both in the House Financial Services under the Chair, Chairwoman's leadership of, of course, Maxine Waters. Diane Feinstein is also, as well as Kamala Harris, also taking steps in this direction on, on, and trying to push it on the Senate side. So, you know, I think there are some opportunities there to, for the city to be able to, to, to showcase some of its initiatives as well in trying to address this issue. There's also a very strong interest in trying to find more direct funding opportunities directly to the cities, not just to the counties and state. In terms of the overall budget, as, as you know, the House did pass a two-year agreement that was worked out with the administration and the Senate is expected to endorse that this week. I don't think there's going to be any surprises here. There's a bit of, of political survival aspects to it on both sides of the aisle. Nobody wants to visit this in the middle of an election period. So trying to push it in as a two-year agreement was something that was desirable in the end. And also to address the debt limit at the same time. What's good about it is that it puts the domestic discretionary programs like home investment, like our capital improvement grant program and, and other programs like that of our public safety aspects, our opportunities to pursue maybe a, a rail improvement project for that, for the intermodal piece of, of what we're trying to do around the streetcar and Amtrak. All of that is, in a sense, is part of the package that was agreed to in terms of the larger numbers that are available for increasing domestic spending. So I think that's important because over the last couple of years, as you know, the cities have lost a lot of ground, including funding for community development block grants. So I, I think we've turned that around. There is no continuation of sequester, which is good news, so we don't have to keep fighting that battle over and over again, like a, a bad time clock. So I think from that standpoint, there's progress. Where they, where all of that breaks down is, is naturally around things, the social policy side of this, around census, around immigration, around interior enforcement issues, humanitarian treatment at the border, all those things that have turned ugly and continue to, to worsen. We have some members on the House side, now that the Democrats control that part of the, of the committees, that are trying to see if they can rectify and set some standards. So you're gonna, you're gonna hear efforts around some legislation in that regard. I think it's the kind of thing that the manager should take a look at and see how it can, you know, be definitely supportive. So that's, that's pretty much.
Dan, can you hear me, Dan?
Yes.
Okay. Dan, that's a good segue into some questions. I do have a couple of questions about budget-related stuff, because yeah, policy-wise, it's, it's complicated for many reasons out in DC, but the budget is something that they need to do something every day. And, you know, in our handout that we have with information from you, on the community development side, it seems the president would like to eliminate the CDBG, which we would not like to happen. You know, we put that money to good local use here. Any, do you have any sense of how negotiations are going between the White House and, and Congress on key funding provisions, particularly that one?
CDBG?
On CDBG, I, I don't think there's been a serious effort to get into the weeds yet on that at all. In some ways, I think there's, at least in terms of where Maxine has put her, as Chairwoman of the House Financial Services, sort of put her attention. And it's between the, the major housing programs that, you know, there are sort of the basic.
You know, you know, Dan, what I, Dan, what I think might, Dan, what I think might be helpful?
At the local level. But I, I would tend to think that there'll, there'll be a revisiting of community development block grants, particularly because of a strong interest in using them as a vehicle for infrastructure expansion.
Dan?
And there's a lot of talk about doing, or using that vehicle for that purpose.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, I don't know if, when there's comments back and forth, that you hear this in a timely fashion. What, what I'd like staff and, staff to work with you on is of these budgetary items, maybe there are, you know, three to five key things where we have a, a clear position that we want to advocate, you know, one would be CDBG. And then we could share that letter with our local delegation here, you know, at the minimum, our congress member and our two United States senators, and then copies to any of the appropriate folks in, in Congress and the White House. But, you know, these are big dollars for us, so, you know, although it's easy to get caught up just doing letters to Sacramento on their hundreds of bills. Things that happen at the federal level are important too, particularly in the budget, because they're, they're big dollars. So maybe you can collaborate with our staff and maybe via city manager's office, there might be a letter that we might consider sending advocating for our positions related to the budget, consistent with the platform.
Sure, sure, that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Dan.
And I, I like the proactive, because that's how you get the city on the map.
Correct.
It's, it's a more aggressive, proactive approach.
Thank you.
Very positive.
Thank you, Dan. Colleagues, any questions that you may have of our federal advocate while he is on the phone? Councilmember Iglesias, vice chair?
So I guess just, I'm just trying to understand the entire process of how this works. So Dan, so you're out there advocating in DC for the needs of our community here in Santa Ana?
That's correct.
Yes. And the guardrails that we use are the, of course, the federal issues, policy, process that the legislative committee is responsible for. And that's a lot of time to make sure it's put together for council consideration. We try to, to keep to the letter of that in everything we do. And as things develop, sometimes there, there may be a new subject area, but I think it generally ends up covering about 99%.
Any other questions, councilman?
Yeah. And how do we as council members give input to you or do you provide feedback, not just at these meetings, but do you provide regular feedback to us?
Well, there's, sometimes you have certain things that you want to stay on top of. And if we can be helpful in doing that, then we, we try to, try to be responsive. I think that's the way we've conducted ourselves in the past. So, you know, particular areas of interest or concern that need to be kept prized of, we try to accommodate.
Okay. So then on the, on the housing and all that, you know, the, what's happening statewide and also at the federal level, that's something that you're keeping us informed and also working with our local lobbyists here too?
Just the federal.
Well, with, on the federal side, I think there are some federal to state connections, nexus, if you want to call it, use a formal term, where because it's money that, that the housing, federal housing side gives to the state, and then it's supposed to flow down to the local, we want to make sure that, that it's, it's getting to where it's supposed to get. So I think in that instance, it's something where we try to collaborate with your, with your folks in Sacramento.
Okay. One more question. I know right, right now, one of the hot topics in DC is the opportunity zones. Is that something that you're working on with our department chairs and also our city manager with?
Yeah, we had brought it up as soon as it, it, it turned legislative and started to share information and then what the internal process over at Treasury was looking like when they were trying to put the rules together. We have some folks here in the firm that are expert on new market tax credits, opportunity zones, those kinds of financial, call them districts or vehicles, if maybe the better word, vehicles that, that a city, you know, could take advantage of. It still means you've got to have investors and you have to have, in this case, certain kinds of investors that have, carrying around capital gains. But yes, and wherever we can, if there's an effort, for instance, I've mentioned the effort to, to try to do a rail improvement project over by the Amtrak and streetcar and the maintenance facility in that area, that if that can be put together, that, that perhaps maybe we can, and that's an opportunity zone area, that perhaps there is an opportunity there to be able to secure some federal funding.
And that's something that goes through the city manager and our department chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because there's a cost share that you have to deal with. But again, you know, there's this internal process so that when you get something, you, you feel, okay, the homework was put into it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Ben Yellosa, any questions?
None at the moment.
Thank you, thank you. Dan, I appreciate your, your time and, you know, I think you got some good feedback from, from the council and we appreciate all the good thinking. And if you do have any additional thinking on that last point that you mentioned about possibly.
No, no, I think we just have to get out there. I mean, it's okay to leave my phone, but.
Hey, you're, you're good.
Do it in person.
We, we appreciate your time. Maybe the next time you can come out here in person, it would be nice to, to have you out and.
So we'll give you some advice.
See our streetcar alignment? And, and Dan, Dan, let me just close by saying, if you could on just the idea of funding related to Amtrak, the train station, our streetcar, we'd be very interested in that because the streetcar is coming. And with that, we'll leave, leave that to you and the staff as a, as a homework assignment. And we'll move on to item, and that's just a receiving file colleague, so nothing we need to do there. Item number seven is a presentation by Corey Williams on our state legislative affairs. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chair members of the committee. The first year of the 2019-2020 legislative session up in Sacramento has been extremely busy. As was mentioned previously, we have a new governor and a new legislature that have been aggressive in advancing legislation in their priority areas, including those that impact local governments. A major focus this session has been on affordable housing and items related to affordable housing like rent control and what steps can be taken to increase the level of housing production in the state. This trend will continue into the last month of session. The legislature is currently on their recess. They come back August 12th, and then they have a race to the finish, which is September 13th, the last day of session for 2019. There's about 1,700 bills that will need to be taken up in that four-week period of time. I want to focus my comments on the state budget. The final budget included a record $214.8 billion in state general fund and special fund expenditures, including many of the governor's priorities, such as health care for undocumented immigrants, homeless funding, and some of the highest education levels in California's history. Additionally, the budget also assumes an estimated $19.4 billion in reserves, including $16.5 billion in Proposition 2 rainy day fund reserves, which continues the priority of Governor Brown in saving money in anticipation of the economic downturn. Specific to Santa Ana, one of the main pieces in the budget that we've been working on over the last several months was funding for homeless and housing. We worked very closely with your big 13-city colleagues to secure $650 million in one-time funds to help local agencies address the homeless crisis. This has coined the homeless housing assistance and prevention program, and it's similar to the HEAP program that was part of the 2019 fiscal year budget. The $650 million is broken out into four categories. $190 million for counties, $175 million for local continuums of care, $10 million to be allocated at a later date, and most importantly, $275 million for the big 13 cities. So if we compare that $275 million allocation to the previous HEAP funding allocation, the HEAP funding was $150 million to the big 10 cities. So you may remember back in the fiscal year 1819 budget, off of that allocation based on the, that year's point in time count, the city of Santa Ana received $3.69 million. The funding in this year's budget will be based on the 2019 point in time counts. Those numbers aren't available yet, but kind of guestimating on how that looks out, it seems like the city will receive closer to about, close to about $6 million in funding to be used for homeless housing assistance and prevention. The allocations will go out no later than April 1st of 2020. So that's money that we're, we're working on with staff to start to plan for and be able to use appropriately. Secondly, there was $1 million included for the Orange County Housing Trust Fund that was established in legislation last year that was co-authored by Assemblymember Daley to help provide gap funding for Orange County affordable housing projects. And there was also $10 million included in the state budget for the Discovery Cube Santa Ana property to purchase a nearby property to develop a new parking lot to allow that museum to expand. And that was something that was supported by the city. And lastly, I wanted to mention the water tax, which has been a big topic of conversation up in Sacramento the last several years. There was a lot of support for the concept of providing a long-term commitment for safe and clean drinking water to those communities that don't have access to it. There was a lot of opposition as to how to fund that ongoing source. Ultimately, the governor reached an agreement to include a $130 million continuous appropriation through the greenhouse gas reduction fund. So cap and trade revenues will go into supporting clean, safe drinking water. That money will not come out of the general fund going forward. And with that, I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Thank you, Corey. Let me start with a couple, let's see. Number one, I think for these housing homeless dollars, as soon as you keep tracking how much and when we might get them, we are anxious and needy for, for dollars. I know we're trying to find more dollars for our quality of life team to help with education enforcement, and I'm sure there's many other things we can do today, not in six months or a year. So the sooner we know, we can even start earlier and, you know, six months or a year, so the sooner we know, we can even start earlier and, you know, appropriate it to our budget, we can anticipate receiving it and start thinking about spending it, so that would be helpful. A real key related piece to the homeless too is Sharon Quirk Silva, Assemblywoman, Sharon Quirk Silva's bill regarding Fairview Developmental Center. And I think we do have a letter on file--
The city supported that bill.
--on that, a support letter, because that pretty much is still a turnkey facility that you can easily convert for the uses that we need, which are for mental health, drug treatment, clients, and potentially other groups as well, so please brainstorm on how we can be more supportive of it other than the letter, because I know it's a key issue and it's going to be a big fight now that there are also Democratic legislators representing Costa Mesa, which wasn't the case before.
Exactly.
So, let's think about that, and then maybe let's have a conversation too about, I forget who their advocates are in Costa Mesa now that I'm thinking about it as well, but let's have a follow-up conversation via our city manager on what else we might do. Finally, it just occurred to me with the safe drinking water dollars, and we may not be eligible outright just based on geography or other items, but I forget what the status is of, we may have two wells that we had to take offline due to PFAS issues, and it could be that uniqueness actually may be a eligible item. I know OCWD is taking the lead in a lot of these issues with PFAS and PFAS, but that would be a clear drinking water need and an urgent one because there's a lot happening in that world. Vice Chair Iglesias, any questions, comments for our state advocates?
Yeah, I have a question. You mentioned something about that the city authorized the funding for a parking lot at the Discovery Cube?
Not authorized, no. The city sent us, your mayor sent a support letter for a budget ask that the Discovery Cube put in to secure $10 million. So it was not an ask from the city, it was an ask from the Discovery Cube, but your mayor included a support letter for that ask to receive that money through the state budget.
Okay, and did we get it, or?
The Discovery Cube received the money through the budget, yes.
They did? How much money did they--
Ten million.
Ten million.
It was an ask from Senator Umberg.
Okay, and then it's for the, for a parking lot?
It's to acquire property--
Where?
--to build and construct a parking lot.
I'll ask Stephen Mendoza if he knows what area they were considering for it, or if they've acquired it, or the status of it.
It's still open-ended which department, which property they're allowed to acquire. They're looking at several opportunities around that adjacent area.
Okay, so if that parking lot is worth more money, then it's going to come from the Discovery Cube, not from the city's budget?
So the city was, it didn't impact the city's budget whatsoever, it was a request that the Discovery Science Center had, supported by Senator Tom Umberg, and then the mayor wrote a letter of support to help them receive those funds, so, and it is for additional parking since they serve such a large educational component.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Penialosa.
Thank you. If no location has been located, may I suggest Red Roof Inn? Just flatten it out and-- But when it comes to things like this, and I'm just still trying to wrap my head around how these things work, if the Discovery Cube, you know, seeked the $10 million and they rewarded $10 million through the state, does that diminish any of our city's potential? And yes, Discovery Cube is in our city and it is benefiting a lot of our residents and traffic flow in that area, but does that limit the ability for our city to request additional funds for similar purposes? I could just see the state saying, well, Discovery Cube got some and that's in your city, so City of Santa Ana, you'll have to wait till next year or whatnot.
It certainly does not limit your ability to make an ask, and we did have three budget asks specific to the city that we worked with Assemblymember Daley on. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to get any through the budget process. It's a very political process, as you can imagine. So it does not limit your ability to ask. We did receive $4 million in the state budget two years ago for an advanced metering infrastructure project that Mr. Daley helped secure. We're planning to go back this year and ask for more, so we're trying to be very aggressive about getting money through the budget.
And it's for the updating the water meters, right?
Correct.
Okay. And also with all these millions and millions of dollars that are talked about, what is, how can we see from the approved budget, what the, I mean, how much of that money would actually trickle down to Santa Ana? Is it money that we just have to ask for within every department and area, or is it something that's automatically allocated to certain cities? I know you mentioned the top ten largest cities. Do you know how much of this we get?
There's a really large range of how this money gets allocated, but the largest amount that will go directly to the city is that piece for homeless money out of what the big thirteen cities advocated for. I don't know the exact numbers yet because they're based on the 2019 point in time count, and all of the cities have not submitted those numbers. My best guess is somewhere around 6 million, and that money will come directly to the city to be, for the city to determine how it's used to support homeless efforts.
And that is dollars that the city was counting on to meet their shelter requirements that they have currently in the MOU?
Okay, because I was going to say, because if, because I don't want to see that, what I'm thinking in my head, just if the state is awarding the city with large amounts of money to address homelessness, is it something that, you know, I don't want it to look like the state and the county could say, well, Santa Ana's been awarded a lot of this money, so help, you know, have Santa Ana take a big load of the homeless in the county because we are one of the largest cities in the county, and it just, you know, no other city in the county is getting this money?
City of Anaheim does as well, they're also part of the big thirteen cities. The big thirteen, you know, they have a special presence up in Sacramento. The big thirteen mayors get together and lobby very heavily for that money. In this homeless pot of funding, there was also 190 million that will go to counties and 175 million that will go to continuums of care. And all of the other non-big thirteen cities will be able to compete for that 175 million. So there's still funding out there for others, but because the big thirteen cities have the majority of the homeless problem in the state, we've been very effective in convincing the governor and the legislature that they deserve a specific apportionment of funding.
But definitely the county and others, the cities will say, look at all this money you're getting, you should just do it all. Same with, you know, few of us have housing authorities that have direct dollars as well, and so, yeah, that's the case, but I think, you know, at the end of the day, we all just want proportionality and fair share, so we just want them to do a share of something.
Right, and that's where I was aiming at, that if we get, I'm just going to make up a number, 50 million a year for homeless, addressing homelessness in the city, I'd rather say, you know what, we'll give South County 25 million if they, you know, commit to building a shelter and doing something. Because South County could just say, hey, Santa Ana's getting a bunch of money, why we don't have the money to do it? So it's something that I'd like more information on and see how--
See how creative it could be. Sometimes there are strings attached. I don't know that our friends in Sacramento would like that, but there might be some, but there is some flexibility, and I like that idea, you know?
Right, because I could imagine there's strings attached, and that's, you know, problematic for me, just trying to make sure that there's equitable responsibility amongst the county versus just one area.
And oftentimes on funding streams like that, the county receives allocations for the smaller cities and then doles it out to the smaller cities.
Right, or they just sit on it like Orange County did for numerous years. Put me on record, let them hear it.
Anything else, colleagues? Vice Chair Iglesias?
Yeah, so, no, but I do agree with what Councilmember Penialosa is saying, and I appreciate the effort that, you know, our consultants are doing, but when it comes to money like that, I totally agree with you, I would rather, with you, Councilmember Penialosa, I would rather say, you know what, I don't want that money, if that's what we're going to, you know, use it for, is to build a homeless shelter, I, you know, let's give it to someone else, because I just, I don't want, if, and I guess this is an ask for the consultants, I don't want an ask for money to add additional housing units, I would add, I would add more for, an ask for, for security, like for us to address the homeless issue and also mental health. That's where I would, I would say we should be getting more money, because that's where we're spending a lot of our general fund money on, is for those costs for services. So if that's something that it's within your radar and things that we should be looking at from the consultant's side, I believe that that should be a very appropriate, appropriate ask for them to ask for additional dollars, so we can address those issues that we have. But housing, I second your motion, Mr. Penialosa.
If I could comment, the money is not restricted to only be used for a homeless shelter. It can be used for homeless prevention programs, other programs that will help people get off the streets, so there is a programmatic aspect to this.
Yep.
Can that be used for rental assistance?
Yes.
Okay, so they don't necessarily have to be homeless, but if there are very low-income families struggling to make ends meet, we could say, hey, we're using it for rental assistance programs, okay.
And there's two or three related of those funding categories, and they all have different levels of flexibility, but this gets back to an earlier point that I made, that as these grants come in, we want to be able to appropriate those dollars in our budget and have the conversation, not just about the revenue coming in, but how we might spend it. And that's where we should decide based off of what those, what the eligibility uses are, what we want to spend it towards, things that are more education-oriented, enforcement-oriented, or different types of housing programs, because there is quite a bit of flexibility there. City Manager Ridge is correct as well, that per the MOU with the county, there have been prior decisions about what type of state housing grant money we would use to pay our share towards some expenses of that other site as well, but that's one of various items that I think we want to keep discussing amongst ourselves and with our city manager. With that, if there are any other questions, we will move on to an update by our League of Cities Staff Rep. Tony Cardenas. I know he probably thinks that Corey stole much of his thunder, which she did, even though the league also helped, obviously, so maybe if there are things you want to clarify or add to of things that were of importance that Corey mentioned, feel free to do so because you should, but if you could focus more on things that weren't covered already, that would even be better.
Absolutely.
Order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I had just a final question on one of the assembly bills--
Go ahead.
Can I just wait till the end, till a council--
Yeah, that's fine.
--comment, and then you'll answer then?
Or may, okay, that's fine. Let's go, Tony?
Okay, very good. Good afternoon, committee members. Tony Cardenas with the League of Cities. When the governor signed his budget on July 5th, one of the biggest missing components of that budget was his housing policy. And recall how we started at the beginning of the year, he was very bold, he declared that he wanted three and a half million new houses constructed in eight years. He wanted to establish a nexus between your transportation dollars and your housing dollars, and there was SB 50, the buy right housing legislation that was in play. All those hearings, all that discussion, all that advocacy boiled down to a budget trailer bill, AB 101 and SB 102, and I provided a five-page analysis of the bill. What does it include? It includes 2.5 billion brand-new dollars. These aren't fees, these aren't taxes, it's brand-new revenue that's going directly to housing infrastructure and homelessness. It's historic, it certainly aligns with the goals of the league. There are new incentives to attract development, but what's getting a lot of the media attention and press attention are the new penalties that will be assessed on cities for noncompliance. The Department of Housing, Community and Economic Development is now tasked with reviewing your housing element. The burden is going to be on HCD to prove that a city is noncompliant. What they do is they bring that proof to a judge, that judge will essentially render a decision if a city is noncompliant or not. If a city is deemed noncompliant, it has 12 months to take some type of corrective action. If no action is taken within those 12 months, fees will start being assessed, anywhere between $10,000 up to $600,000, and that's going to be deposited in a new fund titled the Home, Jobs and Trust Fund. If a city still does not take action after all those fees are levied, the state does have authorization to appoint an agent to enforce certain actions. Every city is going to experience, their RENA numbers going up. No city's going to be immune from that, but there are going to be new resources available. Those that are proactive will be rewarded. Some of the pots of money, 125 million going directly to cities and counties for SEQA infrastructure and planning, 500 million for competitive grants and the new infrastructure investment fund, and as Corey mentioned, 650 million in one-time grants for homelessness. One of the unique aspects of this housing compromise is there's a new classification for cities titled pro-housing cities, and if a city is titled as a pro-housing city, then there's three more additional pots of money that are made available. The question that we're asking as a league is, well, what happens to cities that are not included on the pro-housing list? My recommendation to the committee would certainly be monitor what HCD is doing, they're going to be releasing their guidelines within the next two months, and strive for a classification of a pro-housing city just based on the city's track record on RENA and the link and homeless efforts that have taken place. The director of HCD is going to be here in Fullerton Monday, August 5th. They're going to be doing a roundtable discussion with Assemblywoman Sharon Quirk Silva, I'm working with the district director to get the word out, but that's going to be April 5th at 10:00 AM, so the city will have a direct opportunity to make that request directly. Other than that, the legislature reconvenes August 12th, and we're going to be, we're retracting all those priority cities, bills for the cities.
Excellent.
And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Colleagues, Vice Chair Iglesias, any questions, comments?
On the RENA, I know we've been putting a lot of emphasis on developing housing, you know, low-income housing, but we're not really putting an emphasis on the parking at all. So I don't know how you, as in the League of Cities, or I guess the consultants, they can talk about that, because it affects us. Every time we develop a new project, we don't have enough parking that we're asking of these developers. I mean, they're okay with not even, you know, .75 of a parking spot, or whatever it is. And I know that's something that they're trying to, because they want to push the alternative transportation, but I, you know, I would be more than happy to even write a letter or something, that we should, you know, write a letter to the governor and the legislators that we were impacted by all these high-density projects and we need, we need parking, we're destroying our city. Our city is made up of neighborhood associations, neighborhoods, and now it's like all we see is like, you know, big blobs of apartments everywhere, and it's, and it's not right for the, you know, for the residents who are already living here, and what it does, I don't think, even affordable housing is not even affordable, because we're going to have to have some type of subsidy for affordable housing, and we're just encouraging others to come in and live here, rather than helping the residents that we already have in our city. So if, in a way, we could write a letter, this is what I would ask, is write a letter to the governor that, you know, Santa Ana, we've done our fair share already, and I believe these RENA numbers, even though we may not be the ones that are going to be the proactive housing cities, whatever, Mr.--
Cardenas.
Cardenas, you know, talked about. I know, because we are, we're at capacity already, we're already full, there's no way we could, because who's paying for transport, I mean, for our infrastructure? Who's paying for our, for our roads? Who's paying? The city's going to have to, you know, put up that money out of our general fund, or maybe get grants through transportation somewhere else, but it's affecting our quality of life, and I do think we should have control of how many housing units come into our, into our city, because it, all I'm seeing is who's being rewarded in building these projects is the developers. The perfect example was when we were talking about the Jamboree Housing Project on First Street. One of their, the reasons of why they're not, they're not even addressing to add another, you know, because right now they have what, one parking structure per, you know, unit, but one of the justification was because it would cost the developer more money to add another parking spot. So be it. I mean, if they want to have, we want to do business in our city, I believe they should be providing us with ample parking for our residents, if not, it's going to affect the quality of life of the, of the neighboring neighborhoods that we have, those, and those residents are just, it's not fair to them.
Vice Chair, just to kind of get it back on point, I think your general question about parking and the city's position, or advocates' position and others, with all these housing bills, that does come up pretty, in a pretty heated way, and I think as bill by bills, either we like them or we don't. either we like them or we don't, that's kind of how we weigh in. That's not to say that we couldn't send a separate letter just overall about our views on parking, but the parking thing, I think in general, probably amongst the colleagues here in our council, we may have certain views, but that is a pretty specific area that we should agendize this, that item for a position either at this committee or the city council, because everybody may not be on the same page on, do we want to start opposing all these things or not, but it is, you know, something that is of concern to.
But I would ask Christine if you could start writing that letter, and then we could definitely address it with all the council members.
No, you're exactly right in that it does relate to our state lobbyist work. Typically, you know, you would, we would want to have a legislative platform that's adopted by the entire city council, and then we can weigh in on the issues as long as they're consistent with that. So any type of a viewpoint that would be opposing actions in state law already concerning concessions granted to affordable housing, I would have to seek a majority from the council part of sending something like that.
And again, that would be the reason to agendize, so we can, so that the city manager can know where a majority is. And with parking, it's one thing, we say we can turn about parking, but what does that mean, particularly in the legislative world? We got to be real specific about what we want or don't want with items related to that. Councilmember Penalosa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that I agree with Councilwoman Iglesias in the, just in the fact that I hate seeing these different laws that are state laws, kind of, that developers use to, to get away with, with things like the parking ratio in our city, just because, like I mentioned that the, at the, when we heard, when we had the public hearing for the Jamboree Housing Project on First, we are light-years ahead of anybody else in the county in building affordable housing units and building, and we're at capacity. It's a very dense city, so there should be ways where we can't have those things used against us or over us as a reason of you have to approve this project because X, Y, and Z, because we're already, you know, ahead of everybody else and.
And council.
Doing more than, than everyone else is, so, you know, I, I do like to, would like to see, I would personally like to see that as well come before us so we could take a deeper look into it.
And councilman, that's a good, and we'll let the city manager respond as well. That's a good point, too, and again, what does that mean in the legislative world? That means that the city would consider taking a position, saying that the legislature and the governor ought to undo all the bonus density laws related to seniors and people that live near transit, et cetera, and so, I mean, we, the council can take whatever position they want, but sometimes it's also good to be a little bit clever so that Sacramento will also do something productive with it, because if it's just to say undo those, you know, parking benefits that are to help, you know, seniors, you know, disabled people living near transit, et cetera, that's a tough, that's a tough ask, but city manager?
What I.
I wasn't meant, I wasn't saying to undo everything, I was just saying that.
Like saying don't like those laws?
No, but I'm not saying undo them. I'm saying that there's, there's a lot of space in the state and cities that are not doing anything to combat affordable housing and homelessness, and we just keep building and building, and we're light-years ahead in numerous cities in the county.
But then we got to be specific on what we want.
If we have, if we are doing that, there should be an exit for us and not be forced to do things when we're already doing it and light-years ahead of everybody else. Not undo everything, that's what I mean.
Our friends want us to keep going, that's the issue. And city manager.
So what I understand, Councilman Penalosa, is that for cities who are meeting and achieving their goals and have a large number of affordable units, maybe there's legislation that could give them less of the ability for developers to seek the full amount of the concessions is what I'm understanding you.
Yes.
So if you're meeting your RENA numbers, maybe we get a greater parking ratio because we're at those, and that would apply to any city that would be similarly situated. So that's what I was understanding you to say. So we can bundle that with the discussion from Vice Chair and bring it back to this group?
Sounds good. Anything else, councilmembers? Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Next, we have item number nine, you know, kind of what we're doing, you know, process for reviewing and taking positions on legislative bills, et cetera. Nicole?
So just to let you know, our current process through the city manager's office, the mayor and city council receives this report you received from Holland and Knight and also the Townsend Public Affairs, which includes a matrix. This matrix has all of the bills that we're currently tracking, the description and the current status of each bill. So when those are sent out, that is an opportunity for mayor and council to let us know as well if there's action items they would like to, any action they would like to take on those bills. Also, we receive notification from our advocates, federal and state, as soon as a bill is, that is relevant to the city, it becomes available to take action on, and that's when we reach out to the mayor and council to find out if there are any letters that they would like us to send either support or oppose. So if there's anything that is on this matrix.
Councilman Penalosa?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. With, I'm not, personally, I'm not ready to take a position on this bill yet, but there is a bill going through Congress, the Marijuana Opportunity Act, that I wanted to see if we could get more information on from our federal, I guess it would be Holland and Knight, because there are some things in there that I, from what I've seen and read, that I kind of agree with, but there are, there is heavier taxation on the marijuana revenue, which I don't agree with. Just look, just to get, because I know that will eventually, you know, move forward and come to light, so just if we could get.
An analysis.
Yeah, an analysis of it.
Absolutely.
Good idea. Process-wise, because I think that's mainly what this item is about, maybe just with the monthly reports that come to us, if the advocates have updates on, on bills we have positions on, or if they want to recommend a position on a certain bill, that would be helpful, because then that way, at least monthly, we're getting an update on key bills that we took positions on, or if they say, hey, this bill's really, really moving or it's changing, and it's time to weigh in this way or that way, rather than relying just on councilmembers to read through a long list and make recommendations. That would be helpful if the advocate and staff can, could do that at that monthly interval level. Vice Chair Iglesias, anything else regarding the process for reviewing and taking positions on bills?
Yeah, I have, I guess, clarification. When, when we take positions on legislative bills, we just do it by letter, or is there times or opportunities when, you know, councilmembers and the mayor can go up there to Sacramento and be a person like for public comments, you know, that adds to the presence, and also I would say like the pressure of, you know, either for or against the bill? Is that something that we have done in the past when we're sending elected officials up there?
I can't speak to beyond very long here in Santa Ana, but absolutely, that's typically what elected officials from municipalities will do. They'll weigh in by letter. If it's an issue that they feel strongly about, they can adopt a resolution, but there are scheduled legislative trips both to Washington, D.C. and to Sacramento. I believe the League does them, ACC OC does them, and that's an opportunity for elected officials to travel and meet with the lawmakers on issues that are important to their community.
Yeah, but I'm not saying about meeting the legislators, because I think we can meet them here in the district. I don't think there's a reason why we should be traveling. That's, we should be saving that money. But I'm saying like if, you know, when you go up there, when they're having hearings on issues, is there, you know, sometimes do, there's opportunities for the elected officials to go up there and during public comment on an issue that they're addressing? Is that something that, that we do? Because I know in the.
Yeah, here at the city council, I think what the tradition's been that if there are, if there's testimony on behalf of legislation that the council has approved, you can, you know, work with the authors and committees and our advocates to, to be there to give that testimony, but that doesn't preclude members like us to go and on representing ourselves also take positions, but obviously, it's more impactful if it's on behalf of the city council, and so there are those opportunities, and I think, you know, we could work through the city manager's office to say what type of bills we have positions on and working with our staff and advocates on when there might be hearings on those topics.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, and this has to do as well with when our, the Townsend, what was your name?
Cory Willis.
Cory.
Cory?
Yeah.
When Ms. Cory was discussing, one of the, I know that, that state bill, 689, from Senator Morlock, which one's about needle exchange?
Needle exchange.
Did fail, and we had originally agreed on the council to send the letter of support versus a resolution within our city, and I wanted to see how we could bring that back to our council since it did fail, the bill, and, because I haven't heard any updates on it of a needle exchange program operating in our city, but I would like to begin looking at it and moving forward to introduce a resolution that we would control if and when the needle exchange program and regulate it, what to want to operate in our city, or, and this is again about having control as a legislative body and a city in the best interest and protection of our residents. So if we could, I'd.
Assemble that information.
Yeah.
I think we went through some cleanup, the civic center, I forget how much into detail we went on how we might regulate and approve not just needle exchange programs, but meals programs, et cetera. We may have quite a bit of that already in ordinance form, but if you could provide that background to the councilmembers, and it might be good to agendize anyway just to see if we want to tweak it or amend it, but you might want to review that councilmember so you could see exactly how you want to.
I hear that, but I'd still like to have a standalone needle exchange program item on the, on the agenda for further discussion to, no, on the city council agenda for broader discussion amongst all of us to see what we could do if a resolution is needed or some kind of ordinance that would keep it to our regulations, to our control.
Our city attorneys here, I don't know if you remember how much of what we did, that you could give a little bit of background, but I do appreciate the councilman wanting to have a conversation, because also, some of these councilmembers weren't here when we did some earlier work as well.
Yeah, and I'll just briefly do this, and I'll work with the city manager to make sure that we give her all the research that's been done on the issue. I would like to remind especially our new councilmembers that one of the issues we faced is that the state legislation basically said that the needle exchange programs could come into your communities. That was a statement of policy saying they can come in, but the thing that we forgot in that process, when I say we as staff processed this, was that there's still the land use aspect, and there's still the private property owner aspect, and I think that's where the rub came. The, the previous staff had interpreted that state legislation to mean that they could just come out on any area of your property, you, the city, and they could just set up shop. And so one of the ways that we were able to oppose that to protect what we saw as serious health and safety issues is that we said, we acknowledge that you can set up a program, we don't acknowledge that you can come onto our property with no lease, no license, no permit, and that's how we were able to address the issue. Now, the question also becomes, well, what if they do decide to preempt specifically on the land use issue or require local government to allow? And I think that's the issue that we, I can work with the city manager to bring her up to speed to where we ended up, and then we did have some specific recommendations.
You know, since there is a legislative nexus, I'll say one more thing now that I remembered. Another thing to keep in mind, too, the, the law that permitted those needle exchange programs expires. I think it expires like in, in 2020 or 2021 is the sunset. That's not to say that the author, who's a very able author, Nancy Skinner, she was my seatmate for about four years, they may want to extend that. The legislation also was written away that it said it could happen at the local level if, after consultation with local communities and law enforcement, which really was code for agreement, but our city council at the time, they really were like neutral on this, and almost like, yeah, well, let you come. And so really, the council before, really, the issue wasn't just the law itself, it was that the city council and staff wasn't aggressive enough in keeping that away, and...
And just for the records that you, I just want to be in all fairness, the issue was never brought to the city council. There was an understanding under, under the leadership of a prior city manager and police chief, and looking at that language, they really believed that they were required as a city manager and police chief to allow.
So it was them being a city manager, but really kind of with the consent of the council because it was a very politicized.
When it was brought to the council's attention, that you had some legislative authority, they exercised it, we terminated the program, and then there were some recommendations which we have kind of just kind of stalled out, and that we'll, we'll bring the city manager up to.
Yeah, please, I'd like to see all of those and just, just have that, that conversation. And, and I would like to have that conversation with, with all of our colleagues at the city council versus just, you know, the subcommittee, because it's, it's something that's very important, and we should, you know, do it before it comes back again.
You know, because there is a legislative nexus, you know, this committee can, as part of this legislative item, so that you can do it as, under your name as a staff, conversation, if not, the vehicle would be an 85A item, so maybe councilmember, you could think about it and work with them.
Yeah, but I.
Well, I guess if you want to do it here, we could do it with, you know, an action of this committee, or if you want to do it as an 85A item, you can, you know, request that.
I agree with what, what he's, Councilmember Penalosa's saying, because I know also the County of Orange, I know they, they got like into either a lawsuit or something like that, that they said that they weren't going to allow these, these needle exchange programs, and I think it was a letter signed by all law enforcement and also the County of Orange, if I recall correctly.
So what had happened is after the city of Santa Ana became concerned about the needle exchange program, other cities, including the city of Costa Mesa, also expressed concern. One of the things that we expressed to the county was that before the needle exchange program can be initiated, their county health officer has to be the one to make the finding, which was supposed to be the safety net for us. Unfortunately, when the county supervisors found out that their own county officer had approved, and the county officer would not rescind that approval, they actually brought a writ of mandate that went forward. So there's a complicated history, but I will make sure I work with the city manager, get it all in writing in a report so that we have the right story and not just rumors about what happened, but that's what happened. So the county did ultimately bring a suit. I believe Costa Mesa joined them, and we declined, we kind of watched it because we knew it would be out there. We'd asked the council if you wanted us to sue too, and they said, no, let the other agencies do it, and then we'll bring you up to speed on where it is.
So just so I'm clear, so as, as, in this committee, we could vote to have staff come back with an update at the city council meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I don't know if, would that be appropriate to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
To do that? To make a motion for, so city staff could come back and give us an update at the city council meeting? It doesn't have to be the 20th meeting, it could be the next one, because I know it's, yeah, I don't want to give you, yeah, so, and it could be the one after that, just within the next two, two, three months. I'd like to see that come, not as an 85 item, but just as a, as a staff update to the rest of the council.
And maybe some recommendations if they feel they have.
Yeah, if they had that, according to Madam City Attorney, you had some recommendations, right, that were never presented? Yeah, bring those.
Part of their recommendations, yeah.
I'll second.
Sounds good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? Seeing none, that passes. Excellent. Next, we're going to item number 10, review and discussion of Code of Conduct and Ethics Policies and Review Status of Policy Regarding Ethics Complaints. City manager?
Okay, this item was requested, and I was trying to research the history on this one as well. So from what I can tell is that there was an ad hoc committee created by council to write this policy, and it was approved in June of 2008. There seems to be a little bit of discrepancy on what it's called. I've seen, I believe the official title of the policy is Code of Ethics and Conduct, but I do see in a lot of the minutes and everything, it's interchangeably used as Code of Conduct and Ethics Policy. But it was adopted in 2008, and I know, reading through minutes of this committee in 2018, at one time, there was a lot of conversation and interest in putting together a process to deal with any potential violations of the Code of Ethics and Conduct, and looking at the former minutes, I believe the, the final discussion of it had the committee decline from making any recommendations to city council to implement a formal process of processing complaints, and that they would retain just a status quo policy of the Code of Ethics and Conduct being a value-based policy that applies to all elected officials, all. all appointed board members, and all commissioners. So with that, I know that you had an interest in discussing in detail this, so.
Yeah. Any questions for my colleagues, before I ask some questions?
Well, I can start it off, and then, then I'll have additional questions. But when you say value-based ethics, what does that mean?
Good question. It was a term that was used in the, in the minutes. Let me go back to see how exactly they used it. So this is back in March, March twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, and the members who established the policy said it's value-based, and that the appropriate enforcement agency would be reporting Brown Act violations, or FPPC.
And if I could just add to that, when I do some work, some of you know, in the area of ethics and co-governmental ethics, many years ago, when people, when the cities started adopting these policies, there were different schools of thought. Some cities and some academic people said, we should have rule-based ethics, so the ethics should be mandated, and that we have these laws. We have a lot of laws on the books that regard, that pertain to ethics, Political Reform Act, ten ninety and whatnot. There was a different school of thought, sort of in the academic world, and if I believe, if I recall correctly, University of Santa Clara, I believe, is the university that really came up and did a lot of research in this area. And they started talking about, well, we don't want to mandate ethics based on these laws, why don't we talk about what we value? Because that's really what ethics is about, your values and your ethics. And so some cities went forward and said, yes, why don't we take the softer approach as to, these are going to be our values, you know, we are not going to, this is how we're going to treat each other, and this is how we're going to conduct ourselves. And this is why you've seen these, these codes come up with Code of Conduct and Ethics versus the laws. What was reminded, the council was reminded by the former city clerk, because she had been here when a lot of this was put together, that we came up with a value-based code, and that it wasn't rule-based. And so if it's value-based, how do you have enforcement of the values? If it's a rule-based, then you have rules, and you have punishment for not following the rules. So that was the discussion that occurred. I don't take any position on it, I'm just sharing with you the history and the background as to how we came up with a quote, "values-based" code.
Okay.
Very good.
But also, as elected officials, we are mandated to take a training, don't we? Don't we take an ethics training? Yeah. Right, for ethics training, so.
Every two years. Every two years required by AB twelve thirty-four to take ethics training.
So then that's, a lot of this is covered there, that, you know, how we're supposed to conduct ourselves and on our official capacity. But then when it comes to personal capacity, I mean, a personal, I mean, how is that addressed? Because I'm, I'm a little confused of why this was even brought up.
Why they initiated it in two thousand and eight?
No, why we are even discussing it, so.
Oh, well, with the, the role of this committee being ethics, this would be our policy that we would look for, for that, that guidance. So we wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that it existed, and it was adopted in two thousand and eight, and it was adopted as a result of Measure D, requiring you to have a, a policy such as this. There, there was discussion over the time period, and I'm sure Sonya, you can speak to more detail, where at one point, there was an interest from members of this committee to make it more of a punitive or a rules-oriented, to the point where I believe you drafted a potential policy and procedure that was never then forwarded and adopted by the city council. And then the last information that I could find out about it was just to maintain its status quo.
Okay.
So it is under the purview for recommendations from this committee.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Benialsa, any questions, comments at the time?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. I wanted to cover a few things on this item, and as the city manager said, this committee, especially because it doesn't meet that often, it typically is a regular item on this committee agenda to review any complaints, and if there are any recommendations by staff or the council on them, and again, because this may be one of the few of these committees this year, we ought to discuss it and get a status. I agree with our city manager and city attorney, we need updates to a lot of this process and policy, and that's the primary reason why I wanted to discuss it today, because I think as part of the policy, complaints do come in, and we say that we have an ethics committee, which is, this is at the end of the ethics code, gets people to think about this general topic. And the first issue, I think there needs to be some clarification on, is if folks do have complaints, who should they be filed with and how? So for example, maybe on the clerk's webpage, or on the city council's page, there could be some form or some discussion of if there are complaints where they could be sent to, because I know even as, with the city manager, I was trying to get an understanding of what active complaints there might be, no one really knew, because some, some complaints go to the city manager, some go via the city attorney's office, some via the clerk's office. I know we, a few times this year, we got requests, and that's the other thing, if I have constituents saying that submit a complaint letter, and they say, hey, I asked you guys to agendize and discuss it, we need to be able to acknowledge that we reviewed and discussed, and, you know, when appropriate, make, make decisions. The, the way of view is clarity on who complaints should go to, some simple process, the minimum, where that every complaint that comes in, that somebody on staff does a reply saying, hey, we received the complaint, we're going to send it to the ethics committee, or the city attorney's office, or somebody to look at it. And then the council should receive copies of those. But again, right now, because this, these policies are loose, so loose, you know, with that tens and hundreds of emails we get, there are probably embedded complaints in there that could be the subject matter. But I think that's another reason why, there would be good to think about that. And then, I know too, in the past, there's been questions on, clearly, this policy is for council members and commissioners, but there's been debate on, should executive team members have to sign and abide by these Code of Conduct policies? Maybe so, maybe not. I'd be interested in, at a later date, the city manager and the city attorney reviewing that, but I know that's kind of, was a big issue before, and it kind of went unanswered because, quite honestly, there was some executive team members that, that thought that, no, this shouldn't apply to city staff, it should be only to council and commissioners. So that, I think, deserves some, some thought. And then finally, I think the city manager shared with us what some active complaints are. I know there's some commissioners and existing council member. Did, did everybody receive at least the letter acknowledging that the complaints were received, and that it would be provided to a certain body, or if you could kind of speak to that?
I'm, I'm not sure I know exactly what you're talking about, but back to your other comments.
Sure.
If it's a policy decision to use this in that method, to have, establish a formal complaint process, we would need to, we would take some time, and we did, we need to do it very carefully.
I agree.
Because if you're establishing a vehicle-
I agree. And I'm not, and I'm not asking for an action on that, I'm just saying that, I think, looking towards the future, there needs to be clarity in, where should those complaints be filed?
And there are a number of already FPPC, Brown Act violations, so this, we would need to-
But, but, but that covers the regulations, there's nothing, none of those items cover the items in our Code of Conduct policy. So if somebody does say, hey, there were issues regarding that policy, there needs to be some vehicle for folks to, because if not, should they send them to you? Should they send the city attorney? The city clerk? And so there's a lot of confusion there.
That, that's the challenge when you ask me if I've received any ethical complaints. I mean, I get generic emails, the city manager account, we get them to the city council. With people lodging complaints, now, are those complaints regarding the Code of Ethics and Conducts? There, I mean, there's not a designated form-
Okay, so let me be more specific than-
A number.
How many, how many letters or emails are you aware of, where you were asked to look into an ethics issue and to consider it and/or take it to this body? Did you receive any letters like that this year? Or emails?
I've never received anything that said, take anything to this body.
To consider an ethics item?
I did, I did receive one email-
And what was it related to?
That was, it was relative to allegations of social media postings.
By a council member, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, yeah, and then there may be others. Again, I think there were some commissioner complaints.
Okay, may I? So, yes, I had previously, when we were just looking at this calendar-
Let her answer, then we'll, we'll go to the-
This calendar year, back in January, I received two specific written requests, they were addressed to me, I think they were copied to the council, asking that the matters be looked into as a violation of the Code of Conduct.
Right.
Having to do, again, with some blog posting and social media posting. I took both of those, because I knew that we didn't have a formal policy. I responded to both.
Okay.
I copied the entire city council and said, let me know if you want to refer this to your Code of Ethics Committee. And I didn't receive a response, but that, the individuals received a response to that.
Oh, good, some acknowledgement.
And as did the, as to the person they were complaining against. I sent them a copy of the Code of Ethics Conduct, just letting them know a complaint had been made, and that they were reminded to follow the policy.
And I did respond to the, I did respond to the one that I received as well.
Excellent, thank you. And that's what, that's all I was asking. Counselor Benialsa?
I know when I was on the school board, we have this mechanism that's called Uniform Complaint.
Oh.
So there's, there's a link on the website, on, you know, how individuals from the public can, can file that, and it goes to our HR director. So the HR director's the one that gets all this information, and then the HR director was responsible for giving it to the school board, the school board members and our superintendent. And, but for the most part, it was the HR director that just handled it, because, you know, with all the training that we all have, and, and so, for the most part, that's how it was mitigated. And when the individual wasn't, I guess, satisfied with the response from the HR director, and they were just told to file it with their respective organization, so, you know, if it was a perj violation, whether it a per, whatever it was, that, that's how they handled it. But it was done under the HR director, the HR director was the one, it never came. And if it came to the superintendent, she would forward it over to the HR director, and then they would have to deal with it.
So that was complaints lodged against district employees?
And, and also board members. So that, that's how, that's how it was, it was addressed. And, and I know that, coming to you, either of you guys, I think it's unfair, because anybody can just send an email, like you were saying, you know, just because they feel like they're not being respected, I guess, in, in, on social media. So when it comes to social media, what I would advise our council members is to put on their, on their social media, this does not represent, you know, these posts represent myself as an individual of the, of the public, not as a, me as a council member of, you know, I'm not speaking for the council in general, I'm speaking just for myself. Because all of us are protected, that's why I'm a little confused, because we're all protected in the First Amendment right. As individuals, we could do a lot, you know, just saying, because that, that's just the nature of it, you know, we, we, we have to be able to separate it. But I think if it gets so egregious, that's how we are, we're bound by law under the ethics training that we're taking. So, you know, if anything, I think we should have on, on there, you know, that we've all taken this, this ethics training, but it's just a little, little, I think it's a little overreaching, I don't think we should.
I think, I'm sorry.
So that's some of my questions. I mean, it is a policy decision, but if you move down a policy, policies decision where you wanted this to make rule, and you want to have punitive for any violations of it, it does create a process that would have to be created very, very carefully, because people that have allegations made against them, they have their rights to be protected as well. You would have to have an investigation process, you'd have to have a name clearing process. It would turn into, you could take on a complete life of its own, if that's the direction that you want to move in. I'm not saying that staff can't certainly come up with something for you to go down that path, but then, you know, what is the punitive? Is it censure? Is it an admonition? You know, what is it that you're going to do? Because the people that this applies to are your colleagues on city council, your appointees on boards and commissions. That's the application of this policy.
And staff, right?
Yeah, no.
See, but that's where there's a debate.
This code does not apply to staff. Okay, so let me just, if I could take a step back, because I think that there's assumptions made about how we ended up where we are here today. The charter, a charter amendment was taken to the voters, and part of the amendment was, voters, do you want your city to have a Code of Ethics? That was the only question that was asked.
Right, right.
And the voters said, yes, we do. And so as a result of that, there was an ad hoc committee that was formed, they came up with what was called this value-based code, and they left it alone. That's, that's the law of your city.
That was the minimum that was required of that valid initiative.
That was the minimum that was required. So what has happened now is that some people in the public have this expectation that you've got this Code of Ethics, that it's rule-based, and when someone allegedly violates it, it's going to be taken to the Code Ethics Committee, and the council's going to do something about it. Well, since two thousand and eight, that's not been the reality. But as we get closer to home, to the future, when people raise this issue, it was brought to what was then called the Code of Ethics and Conduct Council Committee. We met at least, I was just going through the minutes, at least eleven times, this issue was discussed by the then committee. Eleven times. We staff came to the committee and said, what do you want committee to recommend to the full council? And after eleven meetings, it was finally recommended to the full council that we do nothing. So if this committee wants to renew interest in it, or do something, you can, but from the staff's perspective, or at least I'll speak for the city attorney's office, we're not engaging in conflicts, we're not engaging in code violations. If someone brings something to my attention that is a violation of other ethics laws, like the Brown Act or Political Reform Act, I will act, and I will refer them to the appropriate agencies. But under your code, as far as staff is concerned, the council's spoken. They don't want a policy. At least, the former council spoke.
At least in the past.
Right, at least in the past.
Good, a segue, and then I think Counselor Benialsa has a question, is these ethics trainings that we do, they're largely centered on state regs, state laws, federal. If we were to say, hey, there's a complaint that somebody violated a Code of Conduct policy here, they're going to say, that's not our jurisdiction, that's up to you. And so again, that, that's why too, even legally, we kind of got boxed in that, we were told by the voters to do something, and we didn't develop any mechanism for review or, or action, and that's, that's the frustration.
And large charter cities throughout the state have very complicated commissions and committees, where members of the public can bring complaints against staff, contractors, elected officials, appointed officials, but they are huge bodies that take on lives of their own, they're funded. We did look into that, we did research, and we reported to the committee. For example, we said, look at the city of San Jose, that operation is, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, it has its own staff council, it has staff members, and the council said that just is beyond our means, we aren't going to do that.
So, so for, so for today, this is just for review and discussion, there's no action that staff or I are recommending. We, I think I'll just kind of keep, keep thinking about what new, if anything, we should do, and, you know, Vice Chair Glaz has had a thought too, maybe it's even something routed through an existing office, because many complaints are employee-specific, which could be council, and that gets to the ambiguity of whether this applies to, to staff or not, but just wanted to let my colleagues know that there is no action recommendation for today. Councilmember Benialsa?
Yeah, I just, I had a question. So, so this isn't, the, the Code of Ethics doesn't, staff, right? It doesn't apply to staff?
No, if you read the introductory, it lists who it's all applicable to, so at this time, it does not include city employees. If I can make a comment, I know, you know, we know where to go.
But that city employees should follow, right?
Well, absolutely. And if, if you read it, you're going to see there, there's some things on here, it does cross over into existing state law, it talks about council members and, and conflicts of interest, and it talks about receiving gifts. So there is a lot of crossover.
I think what the ambiguity was, at least for the appointed staff, because we have few appointed staff, you know, at city hall, it, you know, applies to local government, elected and appointed officials. So appointed clearly means commissioners, where previously, there was some dialogue with the prior council was, does it apply to the three appointed officials in the city of Santa Ana, like our city manager, city attorney, and city clerk? And that kind of never really got res, fully resolved.
And some of us-
If anything, there was a lot of debate about that.
And then, just so that you know, some of us decided to voluntarily sign it, just as your elected officials and appointed officials did. So the city clerk and the city attorney, we both signed it. We did not feel that we had any reason not to abide by the ethical value statements that were here, but that was voluntary, not, not based on-
Thanks for listening.
Okay, I just, because I just needed a more, clearer understanding of what exactly this means, because I've seen, you know, just the last eight months that I've been here, I've seen city staff on social media, you know, talk negatively about myself, other council members, I've seen a lot of my colleagues talk negatively on social media about, you know, staff and, and other officials in the city. And it's, you know, not just one person, it's, it's a lot of, I see it from all sides. And I don't, you know, if we're all signing this code of ethics, you know, this could not, we wouldn't be having this conversation, we all just carried ourselves by the code of ethics and act, you know, positive, and not be negative about various people. But with the, I would like to see more accountability on, if there is a formal complaint submitted across the board, I mean, just, just to, I do like that route of just having the, having it go to the HR director and just, and maybe the city attorney's office as well, just to make sure that there's no laws are being broken, and everything's doing, on, on both, you know, sides. It's to look into it and, and do reach out to the, to the person, you know, put them in the complaint, and the person on the other end, to, you know, see what they could, what you could do, what kind of recommended action you have against the person, or for the person that the complaint was made on, to avoid it from happening again. That's something I would like to see, and that's just, you know, for all appointed commissioners, staff members, all council members, because it's, you know, it's, I just, I just don't like seeing, I mean, I'm, I don't know, the people could say otherwise, but I don't like being negative, I try to be as positive as I can with all of the staff and, and my colleagues. So, you know, that's, that's all I have to say.
Vice Chair?
So, then, would this be like a motion to direct you to do, look into what the school district is doing on the uniform complaint procedure?
We could certainly explore other policies, and there's, it's not an action item for you tonight, but I think the direction that staff is receiving is you would like to see some type of a formalization of a complaint process?
And, and that's just for staff, I'm just a little bit taken back that staff is not bound to the same rules, because I know when you guys sign as an employee, you should be signing something.
If you, if you look through in detail the code of ethics and conduct, even though it says it wasn't created for staff, we have existing policies in place at, at the city of Santa Ana that hold staff accountable to all of those specific areas, so.
So that's why, for me, I'm a little, it doesn't make sense.
Vice Chair, you make a good point, too, in that, you know, we act like we can't change those items, but via ordinance, otherwise, we can add to and make it applicable, or define what we mean by appointed officials. I mean, I'm sure that when voters were looking at this, they thought all officials, because, I mean, they don't know what appointed officials are, everyone, appointed, selected, hired, to them, it was all really the, the, the same thing. And then, to have city managers do it, but not others, while sometimes there are people that are acting city managers, and should maybe bound by this, and all of these are good government and behaviors we should all be expressing, so.
Yeah, I'd just like to make one final comment to you, to be careful, I mean, just to, to be mindful of what I think the district has done. With respect to having a policy or updating this policy to apply to your appointees, or to apply to the city manager's appointees who are at will, there's probably no issue in terms of, that's a policy decision, and that's between your city manager and yourselves as a, as a council. But I would be mindful that if we got, start to get into the areas of where we're going to mandate the employees' behaviors-
Right.
Then we might have different issues-
And that's a bargaining issue, right.
And it might become a bargaining issue, in terms of-
Right, good point, good point.
I'm not, I'm not ready to apply to whether it will or won't, but it raises larger issues that are really beyond this committee and us at this moment. So if you had wanted to direct us to do that, I would just say, that's probably going to take a considerable amount of time to look into, because I'm pretty sure you would have potentially bargaining units. You have statements in here, for example, where you just say, "I treat my fellow officials, staff, and the public with patience, courtesy, and civility." That's a very hard standard to enforce, because what I consider as civil may not be what you consider to be civil.
Right.
Or what I consider to be patient may not be what you consider to be patient. And so, if we're going to start applying these types of standards to staff, we might have a real challenge.
That's another consideration, yeah.
But that should already be, like you were saying, there's policies in place already, so that's already covered. As an employee, I remember when I worked for the county of Orange, we had to sign so many things that, okay, that we would, you know, conduct ourselves professional and all that, and, you know, we would represent the county. But whatever they do on their off-hours, then, that's up to them, you know, so.
Just, so I could add, and, and I do see your point, Madam City Attorney, about, you know, it could become a challenge by going down that route and deciding what, you know, you would consider as ethical and what, what I would consider as ethical or whatnot. Because I, you know, since we, staff along with elected officials and appointed officials, since we are required to take the ethics training, as well as the sexual harassment training, I, I just, I'm trying to legally understand the difference, because it happens all the time where, where employees are, are let go, dismissed for sexual harassment or one hour, complaint lodged against them, but the same argument could be used, as an employee could say, "Well, I didn't consider that sexual harassment, but, you know, she or he did, but now there's a complaint lodged against me, and I might get fired." There should be the same approach to any of these, if, if we are required, as, as, as elected officials, appointed, and, and staffs are required to do the ethics training as well, right?
Not the same.
Oh, no? Okay.
They're not legally required to do that, they're not that legally, there's not a legal standard. Again, if the council were interested in turning their value-based code into a rule-based code, where it's clear where the violation is, you're referring to laws where it's clear what the violations are, with respect to sexual harassment. We have jury instructions-
Right.
It can tell a juror exactly what they need to find, to find the city liable for allowing an employee to commit sexual harassment, and we could do that, that's just not the path that this one sent us down.
Okay, and it would be important, because the, that last sentence on the, it says, "A periodic review of the code shall be conducted to ensure that the code is an effective and vital document," which is effective and living. So we should have these discussions periodically, to see how we could, I mean, fix and make it effective. Vital, I mean, it's living, so it shouldn't just, you know, it's something that we do a lot in our city, not just with this, with ordinances, we just do things and just want to file it away, and it's never-
And that would be the responsibility, I don't know if you want to say responsibility, or at least the jurisdiction of this council committee, to make that recommendation to the city manager and the city attorney, primarily city manager, in terms of if you want-
To review and provide recommendations. And it could be generous, asking staff to review and them to provide recommendations. Another thing I'll mention on the employees side, another dividing line in many organizations, too, are higher requirements for those that have to fill out this Form 700s, because those are, you know, individuals that have, you know-
Decision-making-
Decision-making authority related to conflicts, or contracts, or process stuff, or, you know, discretionary actions, et cetera, so, that's, that's different than, you know, a, you know, part-time, that has a different level of, of authority.
That's true, and so are executives, are they required to fill out 700 forms?
Yes.
Oh, they are?
And a little bit further down, too.
Yeah, and then, because I'm, I'm thinking more importantly, planning and building, you have planning staff putting together these staff reports for, for very lucrative projects and construction projects, you know, what if the other person, the last person to write it, you know, gets gifts or-
Kiss on the cheek.
Yeah.
That is, the city attorney and the city clerk, they do, they designate the filers, and they designate the level, and it is based on their discretionary decision-making ability. If they have no input into a big decision, we don't need them to fill out it.
So the California Political Reform Act actually mandates that the city clerk, it actually is put on the shoulders of city clerk, we work closely with HR and the city clerk, to identify all of the people who are making discretionary decisions, who might have financial interest at stake. And we bring that to the city council every two years. We're legally required to bring it to you, so if you go back and look at your agenda, you will see, every two years, we come to you with a complete list of all the filers and the requirements, which, some people have to file all of disclosures, some people only file one or two disclosures.
Right, right.
But, it was just-
Excellent. Any, any, hopefully we'll wrap up soon, so I'm going to say no, so, to encourage myself to watch the clock here. Any other comments or directions for my colleagues?
Just, just to be clear, what are we doing?
Well, thus far, I think we've given direction, we could think about if, for the future, we want to engendize the broader topic, which I think is probably where we need to start, or, or something else, but this is, this is just a discussion item, there's no, there's no action here.
Just, just we just go back and see best practices somewhere else.
My understanding is you would like us to do research on the matter, to see if there is maybe a mechanism that could be put in place where we formalize the complaints, so that you guys do have an ability to, to monitor them. I will tell you, if there are complaints from the code, a lot of that crosses over to existing laws, I mean, some of the stuff that's in your code of ethics and conduct, it's, it would be fraudulent, it would be a Brown Act violation, it would be an FPPC violation, so there are different avenues. But what I'm understanding is you would like to have, you would like to know if we are actually receiving input from anybody in regards to a complaint specific to this code.
Correct.
Am I correct?
And, and to, just, just the general, you know, uniform complaint procedure, it's, it could be on anyone, because, you know, we're all public employees, you know, the public is paying for all of our salaries, so there should be a, a mechanism on where you can go and there's, you know what, I, I was, you know, not pleased with whatever, you know, the way they treated me, and whatever it is, and that's something that should be looked into by the HR director, if they feel like an employee, too, has been rude, or, you know, they haven't been efficient in the way that they treated the public, so. And, and the best way I would, I would see it would be, and I know the county has it, too, the county of Orange, a uniform, uniform complaint procedure. And it's across the board for everyone, you know, from your clerical staff, all the way up to your deputies and your directors.
I don't think it's been effective at the county, either.
Well, you, you received some direction, and we'll work with you on what future agenda it might be, but you got some crystallized ideas, so appreciate everybody's input and thought. Almost last but not least, communications update by Cindy Perez, Daisy Perez, no, I said Cindy, Daisy.
Good afternoon, committee members. I will provide a brief update in respect of everyone's time. So as most of you are aware, the city manager's office oversees external communications for the city, except for CTV 3, which is under the Parks and Recreation Department. Currently, we have 64,000-plus social media followers or subscribers across all of our platforms, which this figure has more than doubled since this last year. Our office is also responsible for issuing press releases and responding to media requests. We've been working very closely to open up a recruitment for a public affairs and information officer position. This position is currently active and will close August 16th, and we're working with HR to work as fast as possible to expedite that process. Right now, we have Stephanie Britt in our office that helps us with social media, and this Friday will be her last day, so we'll have a couple weeks, hopefully, that's all we have, of void with our social media, so we'll figure it out on internally how we will manage those tasks, but we'll keep going there.
I'll do it for free.
Yeah. And I'd also like to take-
Can we get one post every day, or how, how many can we count on, count them?
We're, we're coming up with additional strategies to get the departments more involved, and provide additional information to make it easier, so we can continue to share the same way we've been sharing. Also, I'd like to take this opportunity to provide a brief update on Census 2020 communication outreach efforts, given that our next meeting is scheduled in February, right before, really, Census Day. So for Census 2020, we have a three-pronged approach that we're working with. The first is partnerships with external stakeholders, so we have a Santa Ana Complete Count Committee with 15 core members, Councilmember Penalosa's the chair of that committee. There's representatives from Santa Ana College, the school district, other government agencies, as well as some nonprofits in the city that we're working very closely with. In addition, we have a Census Ambassador Program, where we're activating leaders within our neighborhood associations, and are working closely with our CDBG and ESG subrecipients, as that funding is directly tied back to Census, to have them directly involved. And then lastly, we have a city-led outreach, which focuses on a comprehensive social media campaign, as well as in-person outreach at various city events. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. First, just want to start by saying, you know, social media's doing much better since you started helping, so I've seen a lot of continuous improvement over the past couple years, so thank you so much for that extra effort and working with internal and external folks on that.
You're welcome.
Councilmembers, any questions, comments?
I have none, Mr. Chair. Thank you, staff, for this, for the info.
Thank you. Committee member comments, Vice Chair Iglesias, anything else to add?
No, I just want to thank you for bringing us to speed on this, and what we're supposed to be focusing on, and I look forward to your updates on, on the, and the information that we, that we requested. So I want to thank everyone for, for attending.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Councilmember?
Same, just want to thank staff for the work and for these reports and these updates to our townsend and holiday night, and Mr. Gardenas, you're still there, I couldn't see you. Thank you.
I'll just close by saying that this meeting's being adjourned, and our next meeting is scheduled for February 26, 2020. It's obviously a ways out, we may need to do an, an extra meeting or two in between, if we can, you know, have, have agendas for them.
I, I was going to say, that's partially my fault, because, you know, I agreed to the special meeting, if we cancel the one in August, because I didn't see how having one, and then having one two weeks later was going to, you know, so, maybe we could look at having one October-ish, you know, that way there's a couple months between now and then, and then, not, because, I mean, it is a big gap between now and February, so-
Right.
Just an idea.
No, that's a good thought. We, we did move it up a little bit earlier, because again, legislature's in recess right now, and so I think they got a little bit of good feedback on, for the last month that they're up there when they restart, what should they focus on, because, I don't, I don't know what, what the date is, but when are they going to close? The 13th of September? Yeah, September 13th, they'll leave for fall recess, and so that's why there's one last month that they have, and I wanted us to give some feedback to our advocates part then. So, with that, thank you very much, and we'll see you next time.